Call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
All right, Mr. Braun.
Present.
Ms. Pace Snook. Ms. Reclu.
Present.
Ms. Sebacher.
Present.
Mr. Schiverdecker.
Here.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Mr. Stone.
Present.
And Mr. Washington.
Here.
Seven council members present and one absent.
And join us for invocation with Pastor Williams. And then we'll go right into the pledge after that.
Let's pray together. Father in heaven, we rejoice on this first day of autumn, thanking you, Lord, for the time and the place in which we live and raise our families. I'll always give you praise, Lord, for the lives that we're all able to lead and to live. That being prayed, our neighbors in California, Oregon, and State of Washington still burning. The floods are in Galveston and moving north tonight. There's another tropical storm brewing in the Caribbean. So many folks, Lord, still under siege, still struggling. We reached that dreaded figure of 200,000 dying by the ways of coronavirus. Doctors and nurses still toiling, taking care of over a million patients as of this day. Our work as Christians will not cease until you return, meeting the needs prayerfully of the multitudes around us and very close to us who need your love and your care. I pray, Lord, in the heartland, this is harvest season, and all of us have to be especially aware of farmers as they move big equipment and big trucks from field to elevator, from house to field. We all have a responsibility to help keep them safe as they harvest the food that we eat every day. In addition, we have our kids in school. They're doing quite well. But that puts extra responsibility on our police officers and first responders and firefighters and all of us who work together so that children have a safe, secure environment in which to learn. Dear Lord, we pray for all of our first responders, that you keep them well so they can continue to guard and keep our community safe and our children. I pray tonight, Lord, for this session. I thank you, Lord, for our mayor, our mayor pro tem, our council persons, the community at large who comes to participate, all the administrators and department heads that lead this wonderful community. May they be blessed and continually well as we work each day to support and encourage each other. Finally, I ask you, dear Lord, to bless those that are connected to the city family who are going through health issues. Some have lost loved ones. Others are facing uncertain times for many and various needs. We pray, dear God, for your peace and your presence to love and care for them. Lead this session tonight to the glory of God. We'll give you the thanks for it together in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Face the flag. Attention, salute and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. I do have a need to amend tonight's agenda, to add Resolution number 3382, a resolution allowing the city to apply for a local law enforcement grant. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda?
Motion to amend.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any reason for discussion? We'll go to a voice. Madam Clerk.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed? All right. We will add that under resolutions.
At this time, we'll take comments from visitors. We ask you to keep your time at the podium to five minutes. The council will not interact with you during this time, but may choose to do so later. Anyone wishing to speak tonight? See no one coming forward? Move on. Madam Clerk, would you please present the consent agenda?
Yes. Tonight on the consent agenda, we have the approval of the city council meeting minutes of August 25th, 2020, the approval of the city council meeting minutes of September 8th, 2020, the approval of the Director of Administration report of August, and approval of the appointment of Richard Vaughn to the Public Utility Board. The term would expire in July of 2024.
Anybody wishing to?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I would like to remove the Director of Administration report if I could, please.
All right, Mr. Simmons and Ms. Sebacher, does your motion still stand?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we will go ahead and do a voice vote there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed? Thank you.
Okay, on the consent agenda, and I know we all, we all looked at it and we've talked about it, but I really, really, really think that we need to have a big kudos and I wish he could have been here tonight to Jamie Martin, our PGA golf pro at the golf course, with the best year, the best month ever for the city of Fulton at the golf course. Fabulous, fabulous number and on record pace to really make it happen this year as well, to be the best year ever. And kudos can't go out enough to him for what he's done out there at the golf course. That's all I really had on the consent agenda.
Since we're talking about it, I'll have a, I have a question. In the Stormwater Stream team on page seven, it talks about Fulton qualifying as a Tree USA City. What is that?
Kyle. This came up when we had a, I'll call it a stream slash trail walk with other kind of local towns with counterparts, with parks and recreations, Department of Conservation people, Department of Natural Resources people. They recommended that, they mentioned that other communities are, I may get the name wrong with Tree USA, qualified cities and that that can open up some better funding when it comes to grants, when it comes to like stream restorations and things like that. So their recommendation was for the city of Fulton to apply to become one and it wouldn't require too many strings attached. And in fact, we're probably already doing most of those things. We're just not taking credit for it. So they just said it might open up a little bit more funding when it comes to grants. So that's about.
Do we need to point trees or?
It's, I don't know the, I don't know the details of it yet because my staff is still looking into it. But we'll get you further information on it in the future. But yeah, it would become, it, it's, it's about conservation, trees, planting more trees, stream buffers, that kind of thing. When, when you're talking parks and, and trails along streams, trying to, trying to do, trying to maintain both, that can be a tricky subject, right? You know, you want a nice walkway that's nice and open so people can see, but you also want to, want to preserve the stream and the stream banks as well. So those are, it's kind of a dance, you know, so, but, but yeah, it's about planting trees.
Yeah, I don't know if there's something we could do to help or just keep us informed, please.
Will do.
Thank you.
Kyle, while you're here, I just want to thank you for the work that I saw in your report on the sidewalk proposal from Collier to Westminster. Thank you for the preliminary work you're doing on that.
No problem.
Motion to approve the Director of Administration report.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Director of Administration report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same. Okay. Presentation and acceptance of the Month of August financial report by Ms. Kathy Holschler.
I'll start off by telling you our sales tax went the other way this month. We're within 1% of where we were the prior year, .7, .8, which is far better than going down, down, down. I think I've explained everything in the notes. I will draw your attention to the asphalt mix hit the expense this month for the street department. When we made our payment to River City in August, we were, we drew the first $63,000 from the loan. And Electric had an extremely good month in large part because there was a true-up credit from Sykesston. It was $190,000, $191,000, which typically occurs this time of year. And other than that, our answer to questions.
Motion to approve the financial report.
Second.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the financial report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, Kathy. Unfinished business, we have Parks and Rec Center fee discussion. Mr. Clay Caswell.
Yeah, at the last meeting, I provided the council with some, a proposed fee structure. The park board has reviewed this fee proposal. They're recommending it to the council. And again, it's, it's just a starting point, so we're, we're open to any ideas or changes.
And this item was put on the agenda again tonight because I know there was some discussion that, that some of you wanted to have regarding salaries and how that's going to look for the budget. So that's why it's being brought back now, since those discussions have been had.
I believe that we ought to go with what Clay presented.
Clay, did, how was it going to affect, did you look at how it might affect you or did they even hear yet, Bill, what the increases were going to be?
No.
Yeah, I think everybody pretty much knows that the increases are going to be $0.75 an hour.
I, I wasn't aware. So, no, I haven't, I haven't made any changes to the budget based on, on that because I haven't heard anything yet. So I, I, looking at it, I don't, you know, I went back and kind of looked at what the hourly rates were for the staffing. I think we're kind of in that 11 to 14 range. So we're, we're above minimum wage right now. And, and the thing to keep in mind with a lot of those positions is that they're, they're part-time positions too. They're not, they're not full-time positions, so.
But the full-times that are there would be included?
The, these are all going to be, most of them's going to be new positions. So they'll just be hired in at a rate that he has proposed as compared to having the $0.75 an hour affect that start.
And the rates we're proposing, I think we're talking maybe about two full-time positions. They're comparable to other, other positions that are similar, so.
And you're comfortable, or the park board's comfortable with the fees that are there when we're, when we are literally the lowest of all around?
Yes. I mean, obviously, that's going to get adjusted as we go through a year or two years. That's going to change a lot, I think. But again, we, we need to be competitive. We also need to keep in mind that the sales tax that the people are paying have paid for this facility. So, so while we're trying to offset the costs, we, we got to keep that in mind a little bit too. So that's, that's kind of where we came from. And again, we looked at a lot of different facilities. You can see they're all over the place. There's, there's some pretty high ones, there's some, there's some low ones. A lot of these communities are similar size to our community. So we, I think we feel comfortable, but I think there's always room to adjust up or down as we go.
Well, and I guess what I don't want to see is we bring in at one rate and then immediately, oh shucks, that's really not going to work. Let's increase it within the first year. That would be pretty hard to swallow in my, in my, in my mind.
I, I agree with you, but I think that, that's a possibility. And I think whatever increases we do, I think they need to be gradual. Just, you know, because I think there's, there's going to be a little bit growing pains as we figure all this out. You know, my budget's based on bringing X number of members, X number of visitors, X number of events to the facility. If that changes, that, that's probably going to change our rates a little bit too. And then you got to feel out, you got to feel out what people are willing to pay. You know, if we're, if we're renting a room for $300 and we're getting a lot of rentals, then we know that's probably maybe on the cheap side or at the right price. If we're getting none, then we may need to adjust that, so.
I think you're right. I think we need to revisit. If we see the need, that we do need to revisit, we'll do it.
And I think once we get a year in, we can bring the numbers back and say, this is, here's what we did with, with this rate, here's what we did with this rate. And the council can look at it and, and make some suggestions then.
So do you need something from us tonight to get this going or is this, can you just start it or?
In order to enact those fees.
We'd like to have something so they can put on.
Make a motion that we approve the rates as they are written.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any more need for discussion?
I want to bring this up again. The rates, what, whatever, I mean, that's, yeah, we're going to set rates and adjust them as necessary, although I think your revenue projections are overly generous. And I do not want to see us come into September and October and find out, you know, we're going to be $100,000 short of what we thought we were going to get because not everybody's, we didn't rent as enough rooms and, you know, William Woods in Westminster didn't participate and just everything. I would rather see we're really glad that we got extra money than try to scramble at the end of the year to find money to make up the shortfall.
And, and I think the responsibility lies on us to minimize the expenses, especially during that first year. You know, we, we can't go crazy with the expenses. We got to keep them under control. We got to, we got to be tight with the staffing. And, you know, as it's used more, as we're bringing in more revenue, we'll need more staff. So we'll, we'll have to adjust with that. But again, that's, that falls on us to make sure that we're really watching it.
Urgent caution, this is the first year where we think we know what's going to happen, we really don't know.
Yeah, Mr. Ballard, if we can, if we know what the future was and what, what it's going to be surely, but I, I trust that he is, it's in good hands that he's going to make that.
Well, like I, like I said before, I think they're overly generous. I don't want us to get into trouble with the, in a year from now.
And none of us wanted to be in trouble for a year from now.
Right, yeah.
We can do, move on and see what happens.
And I, and I certainly think that with Clay putting his own number out there, he has a target and a goal that he knows he needs to meet, you know? That's, that's where Clay comes into effect, to make sure that number happens. And I have all the confidence that it would.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, I have a motion and a second. At this point, we'll ask for, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clay. Okay, under new business, we have city recycling, yard waste, household hazard waste collection discussion. And we have Mr. Robert Boone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You have my packet, some, some stuff that I pulled together at Bill's request. And I wanted to kind of start off to get you in the mindset of how I approached this. You know, back early this year, we, we had COVID. Around March, I think of 2020, Bill kind of thought the revenues, you know, might be reduced. And so we were starting looking at the 2020 budget and some of the projects that we had, possibly putting them on hold and even possibly pushing some of them back to 2021. So with that, with that mindset, we kind of wanted to wait and see what sales tax we're going to do and stuff like that. And so we started getting closer and closer to June when our proposed capital budget was due. And so we asked the department heads to kind of be conservative, you know, with their capital request. And, you know, I put together that budget and I am a department head over solid waste. And so if we were asking other department heads to be conservative, that led me to look, start looking at some of our programs. I started looking at the recycling program. And that we value recycling in this community, right? But it is basically a free program. And so the information I gave you kind of gave you a breakdown of the different aspects of the recycling programs that we have, that we offer and their cost. Well, I think it was last Friday, Councilmen Braun and Simmons came in to pick up their packets. And we had a little discussion about recycling that day. And that discussion kind of changed my mind actually about some of the suggestions that you have in front of you as I presented to you in the packet. So I kind of talked to Bill about it a little bit and what I'm thinking is if you really want to continue these recycling programs, then other suggestions that I would like for you to consider are one, the residential recycling, possibly increasing the cart fee. And I'm thinking increasing it up to $9. $9 will cover that cost that you have in that packet right now. Number two, another one to consider is the household hazardous waste. We used to get a grant for that. We don't get a grant anymore for that. So I'm suggesting maybe we either reduce it down to one time a month. We actually do it two times a month, April through October, and, or maybe doing it just twice a year, maybe spring and fall. And last but not least, yard waste. We currently have our, our roll-offs at the fire stations. And they're always full and they're always even running over. And so what I was suggesting to Bill and for you guys to consider maybe is moving those roll-offs to the warehouse, being behind the fence and maybe even having staff kind of guiding people to where, to where those roll-offs are. And maybe even having them require proof that they have city residency because we have people coming from outside of Fulton and we're having lawn care businesses kind of dumping in those roll-offs. So maybe that would kind of control that and maybe be able to even pull back on some of the costs. The other thing that, that, that I think we should consider is a curbside pickup. Or do we refer people to Bluebird composting? I'm not really sure which way you really want to go on something like that, but that's, that's really all the comments that I got about it besides what you have in the packet.
So yard waste.
Yes.
If you were to, let's say, eliminate us picking up yard waste at the two locations, would you still pick them up in front of everybody's house?
Right now, yes. Curbside, yes.
And we, and we realize that that collection would go up. People don't have the opportunity to take it to the, one of the fire stations. More people would, would use the curbside opportunity.
I know, I have, I use the one down in Tennesson. I have seen people show up with a Jeep and, and throw like four limbs in the dumpster. And I've seen people with a 12-foot long trailer and everything in between, yeah. To me, trying to put four-foot lengths of twigs together that have fallen are very difficult. I'd much rather throw them in the back of my pickup and take them to the dumpster.
You would still have that opportunity if you took them straight to Bluebird.
Yeah, but I'd have to pay for it other than, I mean, it's paid for through my taxes, but. The, the household hazardous waste. We do that, what, twice, two times a month?
Yes, second and fourth.
And how busy is it?
I think pretty extreme, extremely busy.
Really?
Yeah, it averages about, about $108 per car or something like that.
A hundred cars?
No, 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 no. A hundred dollars per, per car. Over the past several years, the, the cost to dispose of the household hazardous waste has gone up significantly.
Yes.
This past year, I think the doll, it was about a dollar, over a dollar a pound for, for the, that the hauler, that the providers of the service was charging the city to get rid of this. And I think we had about 28,000 pounds. As he mentioned earlier, the only reason we got into this 10 years ago, maybe not that, maybe not that long, was because there was a grant that, that paid for a lot of the installation of the containers that we, that we pack it into and also covered some of the city staff time as well as covered the cost of the disposal. Well, like with any operational grant, those grants go away. And we really didn't know or didn't care what the cost was as long as somebody else is paying it. But once it became evident that the city of Fulton was paying $28,000 a year for some cars to dump off paint, insecticide, herbicide, various household hazardous wastes, that, then it got, came to our attention. And I think one thing that, I think Kevin said this, because the fire, you know, it's held at the fire department and the fire department staff said, I think Kevin said that most, a lot of the household hazardous waste is coming from outside the city.
So 50%?
Yeah, he, he says 50% of the household hazardous waste is coming from outside the city limits.
Lot of things, yeah.
So.
Yeah, but don't they set that up by appointment only?
They do.
So if you ask them when you're setting up the appointment, if they live inside the city limits?
They, they don't.
No, countywide, that's what the, that's what we always.
Well, but the county's not paying for it anymore, so.
Maybe that's what we need to look at.
Yes.
Chief, as we look at the opportunity for it to be, for the.
As we look at the opportunity for it to be, for the county to pitch in some money. Go ahead, Chief.
Yeah, I would say at least, at least 50% is coming from the county. And some days we have two-pagefuls, some days we have half a page, and then there's 20 more people that show up, didn't know they had to have an appointment. Some people bring 30 gallons of paint, some bring 40 gallons of paint. We got to take their word that, you know, it's residential. We can't set out and say, well, we, we think this is commercial, so you're going to have to go. That wouldn't be good. So it's always been countywide since we started the program in 2010.
Is there a way to put a small dollar amount on, on what people bring? Is that a possibility even? I mean, obviously, then we have firefighters that are manning it, trying to collect money, and I'm not sure, do something with it like that? I, I know most everywhere else, you want to take a TV, or you want to take some, you pay a price to take that TV someplace.
I, just me personally, I wouldn't, I mean, I would kind of designate someone out there on Saturdays to take the money.
Robert, what do you got going on on Saturdays?
There's a lot of cases when we're out there, and, I mean, we're on duty, when we get hit with a call, we have to go.
Sure.
You bet.
And it's going to be hard to account for the money. And I would recommend having someone designated to collect.
So the hazardous waste, if we bring it to you folks at every other Saturday, or whatever, versus I just put it in my trash can, where do they end up? Do they end up in the same place?
No.
Do they treat yours differently than they treat?
Yes, if you put it in your trash can, it goes in the landfill, which is perfectly acceptable.
No.
Yes. If you put it in the trash, trash can, it goes to the landfill.
No, he said, then I'm breaking the law.
Not, not the residential.
It's liquid.
You, there's only like three things, I think Wendy went over, that you're not supposed to put in there, and one's.
It's, it's bigger than that bill, and they, they will refuse it. If they see it, they'll refuse it. Right?
If it's solid.
If it's dried up, yeah.
If it's liquid, we can't take it. If it's dried up, then it has like, could be litter mixed in with the first thing then.
But you're right, tires and stuff like that also, I mean, they'll reject it.
What's the possibility of getting a list of residents, utility-paying people, to give to the chief, that when they, someone's come, and you can check and see if that person's there? Is that, is that possible? That was just a question.
That would be possible.
Well, but I think what's happening is, and right, wrong, or indifferent, my in-laws, they don't live out of the city limits. But if they lived outside of city limits, they're bringing their stuff into me, and then I'm bringing it in.
Right.
You know? But if it's countywide, I guess that wouldn't make a difference.
It doesn't matter, it's countywide right now, yeah.
And when we started, you know, like, I hate to say, but somebody else was paying the bill. So it was like, we wanted to make it as successful as possible, remove as many pounds of hazardous waste from landfills as possible. So at that point in time, countywide was, was the way to let that happen.
I think that should still be our goal. You know, it, it sounds like we might have an opportunity to reach out to the county, and say, we have a countywide program that the city's supporting, and see if there's opportunity for the county to assist us with the cost of this countywide program that is good for everybody. It is the right thing to do. And obviously, people are using it. You know, I, I doubt there's too much of turning away that isn't hazardous waste. It's not like we're putting a whole bunch of stuff into the hazardous waste that's not hazardous waste.
Oh, it's not.
So it, it's, the stuff that needs to go to this program is going to this program, it's going to the right place, it's getting disposed of correctly. And while, yeah, it's costing us twice as much as it did eight years ago, it's still the right thing to do. I think we just need to seek other funding, especially if it's a countywide program. But I mean, it's being funded right now through, what, city utilities and city taxes. So we make it an opportunity for the county to pitch in a little bit.
Would reducing the times of collection, you know, once a month, twice a year, would that help?
I would recommend a couple of times a year.
My opinion is, then it's just going to go in the trash.
That's, that's exactly what's going to happen.
If, if, we obviously have a need, we have, we have a need to dispose of this stuff correctly, or else we wouldn't still be seeing these volumes every other week. So by reducing it, all we're doing is encouraging people to throw it away if they want it out of their house.
And I'd be fearful that we would do that if we started charging them as well. I'm not going to pay to have my trash thrown away. I'm just going to throw it away.
Does everybody feel like this might be a topic that we could have as a work session to, to come to some more resolution on?
Well.
I think. For almost all three?
Yeah, for all three of them.
Yeah, the yard waste.
I have opinions on all three.
I do too.
We can either listen in to them tonight, or some other time, but.
Yeah, the yard waste, I like the idea, if you move them from the, move them from the fire stations, and put them behind the city warehouse. And I think we need an ordinance, something down to the fact of, if you're not a residence, and you're a company, and you dumping stuff in our dumpster, we can find you.
And that's certainly happening too. I, I've witnessed it firsthand.
Yeah, so I.
We have put up signs, and we put up video cameras to videotape these guys. But we. It goes back to a lot of it, it's, it's just, how are you going to enforce this? Are you going to put somebody out there to watch it, you know, 24 hours a day?
Well, you said you got a video, right?
We do have video.
Okay, and it's the company's truck, and they got their names on it, on, on, and they bring it in here, and they got the names, and we can identify who they are. We can send them a letter and say, you owe us, and this is what, and if we have an ordinance that's saying this, they're fine for you guys dumping, stuff like that. Well, anyway, that's.
I think the problem we usually run into with things like that is, like, the prosecution side of it. And is it worth having it on paper if it's not going to make it through the court system? Secondly, I could be driving my company vehicle and dropping something off. So those are kind of the arguments, because I know we've looked at that before, trying to go down that path, and it hasn't ever come to fruition.
Yeah, okay, thank you. But I still, I believe if we have an ordinance, and most people are going to comply with it, and you're sure you're going to get that exception if someone's going to press the, press the, you know, but, anyway, we can, like you said, we can do this at a work session.
The, the option to take it to the warehouse. I assume the gates close on Saturday and Sunday.
Yes.
Okay. A lot of people want to do it on Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah.
So I don't know how viable that might be. But.
And again, unless, unless you staff it on Saturday or Sunday, it's not going to be.
Staff it.
Then that's, that's an additional cost again.
Well, we're looking for morning staffing, from the morning to noon, that's it. If you can't bring your stuff between then, you just hold on to it till after, in my opinion.
And it's, or it's going to increase the curbside, which is going to increase our staffing also.
And I'll just remind everybody that you can get a special pickup in town, and I'm a, I use it a lot. It's only $17. And I don't have to travel anywhere. I set it on the curb.
That's right.
Then off it goes.
And that's well worth it, yes, I do.
Yeah.
Not hazardous waste, no hazardous waste.
No.
It almost sounds like we need to talk about this.
Talk about a work session.
I certainly think so.
The item with the recycling, the recycling is open to every resident. So trying to make the money up on the folks that have chosen to rent a bin, I don't believe is the correct way to go.
The only way you could do that is that you'd have to stop picking up recycling except for what's in bins.
Or you increase a utility rate that covers the cost for everybody, since it's an opportunity for everybody.
And it is countywide, so.
No, I'm sorry.
No, recycling.
Residential recycling.
Residential recycling.
Excuse me.
I mean, otherwise, if you, if you increase the rental price on the bins, then people just won't rent the bins, and they'll put it out there in whatever bag they want to. And then you've just increased your, your workload, because now you're having to not pick up in a nice.
Now you got to pick up paper bags.
Right.
I think on the yard waste, you know, if we move the dumpsters, if we decide to move them somewhere, move them to the warehouse, maybe right outside the gate or something, it would look a lot better than the, at the fire stations. Because they're, on a busy weekend, I mean, it's piled all the way around the dumpsters.
Yep.
Yeah.
I think it would be a lot easier to get the equipment in there from there, from the warehouse, instead of driving a end loader from the warehouse all the way out to Tennesse Road Fire Station to clean it up.
Rubber tire loader.
Good idea.
Okay. At, at this point, if there's no more discussion, I'd like to, to make motion or ask about having this for our next work session, and so we can get to a resolution of it. Anybody?
We need a motion for it?
Please?
Okay, then I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
We have for the next work session.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to, to move this to a work session at our next regularly scheduled meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, young man.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thanks for the hard work.
Right now, we're in the audit.
All right, we'll move on. Presentation and acceptance of the 2019 City of Fulton Audit.
Finally, the fun stuff.
It's my pleasure to introduce Ashley Rowling, who was the lead on our audit this year, and Amanda Schultz, who is a partner at Williams Keepers and will present the audit.
Welcome to both of you.
Yes.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for having us. So I will just be going over our summary report this evening, which hits the highlights of the 2019 audit. I believe you have a blue book or two in front of you. It is the one titled Summary Report. And again, I'll just hit the highlights. Let me know if you have any questions or comments. So the city prepared a comprehensive annual financial report, or a CAFER, again this year, which contains substantially more information than that required by generally accepted accounting principles, and is a sign of excellence in financial reporting. We will just be focusing on the financial section tonight. But the CAFER also contains an introductory and a statistical section, which are additional GFOA requirements. So check those out if you have free time. The city has received the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for 21 consecutive years, and expects to receive it again for this year's CAFER for 2019. So moving on to the financial statements, we issued an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements again this year. In our opinion, the city's financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects, in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles. That is the best opinion that you can get, and it means that the users of the city's financial statements can rely on them. So the financial statements themselves, as well as the notes that support them. Management is ultimately responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. But as the city's auditors, we prepared the financial statements again this year, which were reviewed and approved by management, and ultimately accepted as their representation. We do use our judgment in determining how to audit the city, or any organization for that matter, when we perform a financial statement audit. So we perform a risk assessment process, and we focus on areas where the financial statements could be materially misstated. So all that to say, we don't audit every balance or every transaction, but we do enough work in order to be able to give that unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements. Moving on to the second page of the summary report, just a reminder that the financial statements include two different sets of financial statements. On pages 10 and 11 are the government-wide financial statements. So that includes all of the city's funds, including capital assets, long-term debt, any other liabilities. So everything that the city has to be reported is included in those financial statements on those two pages. The fund financial statements are on pages 12 through 19, and provide quite a bit more detail about the city's governmental funds and proprietary funds, which are the utility funds. We've included some summarized highlights from the government-wide financial statements for 2019, which was the most recent audit, as well as comparative information back to 2018 and 2017. There is a section in the CAFER titled The Management's Discussion and Analysis, that's on pages three through nine, and it discusses the changes in the various categories. So I would refer you there, if you're interested in any of the individual changes. Any questions on the financial statements?
I, I just have a question, and, and you brought it up, that we've received accommodations for 21 years. Is that how long your firm's been doing the audit?
No.
Okay. I just was curious.
Not, not that many number of years. At least 12, that's how long I've been with the firm.
Mine are 10.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So the next report that we issue as a result of the audit is the Auditor's Communication Letter. And it includes comments about the audit process that our professional standards require that we communicate to those charged with governance. And for the city, the city council serves that role. This year's letter is very consistent with prior years, so I'll just hit the highlights of it as well. We did not note any transactions that we considered both unusual and significant, and there was no change in accounting policies during the year. So that means there were no new accounting standards that changed how anything was accounted or reported in the financial statements. There will be a few changes in the coming years that we'll assess with city management, how that will impact accounting and financial reporting. As part of our audit, we do evaluate the estimates that affect the financial statements, and make sure that they are reasonable in relation to the financial statements taken as a whole. And also the financial statement disclosures, we make sure that all of the required disclosures to support the financial statements are included. Moving on to the third and final page of the summary report, we found the accounting records to be in good order. We did not propose any significant audit adjustments as a result of our procedures. We did assist the city with adjustments for property taxes and the pension plan, but that's pretty standard each year. We didn't have any disagreements with management on accounting or auditing issues, and we had no significant difficulties in performing the audit. We did perform the audit a little bit later this year than we have in prior years. And we did perform some of the work remotely, but overall, things still went really well. Last but not least is our management letter. The purpose of a financial statement audit is to give an opinion on the financial statements, and not to give an opinion on internal control. But if we identify any findings or recommendations related to internal control, specifically over financial reporting, we would include them in this letter. The letter basically states that we did not identify any material weaknesses in internal control. We also did not list any significant efficiencies there. We just included a few recommendations for city management to consider. But again, those are not material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. So are there any questions or comments?
I think I kind of talked to you, trying to go short. Can you give me 30 seconds on why you're qualified to do the audit?
Why we're qualified to do the audit?
I mean, with some of your background and the, your experience.
The firm, or me personally?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, the firm, Williams Keepers, I don't know if anyone has heard of us. We are a local firm to mid-Missouri. We're in both Columbia and Jefferson City, and our firm has been around, we'll be selling a bidding 100 years in 2023. So we've been around in the local community for a very long time. We have a pretty significant government and nonprofit practice, and we serve a variety up to 15 industries throughout mid-Missouri, and really throughout the state. There are 15 partners. We are member-owned, we are locally-owned, we are independent. Nobody owns us. So we're not owned by a larger regional firm, or a big four firm. But we're big enough that with, you know, after those 15 members are taken into, into consideration, we have 100 associates on staff with us. So we have the depth and breadth of resources to be able to serve a variety of clients. And we've had a longstanding good reputation in the community. We attend CPE specific to the industries that we serve. We even invite a lot of our clients to attend that CPE free of charge. There's always changes in the GASB, Governmental Accounting Standards Board world. And we like to stay abreast of those changes and make sure our clients are too.
Outside of Fulton, are there city governments that you represent?
Yeah.
How many?
Yeah, we serve around 10 local municipalities. We do their annual financial statement audits. We also do MIRMA audits, which I should have mentioned for the city. We do your annual MIRMA audit, as well as just a requirement for participating in that program.
How about yourself? How, yeah, can we do a little bit about you?
Yeah, so I've been with the firm for 12 years. And at the beginning of 2019, I was elected to the member group. We call ourselves members, but it's the same term as being a partner. I'm from Columbia originally, so grew up there, went to Mizzou, really never left, and have been with Williams Keepers my entire career. I've got a family. Husband's a physical therapist in Columbia. I have two small children, one of whom I'm actually homeschooling, for the most part. Right now, the schools in Columbia are closed.
Yes.
So, yeah, we're just doing virtual learning right now. So I was actually home with my first-grade daughter, doing some teaching this morning. And our son is almost three, and he's in preschool. Yeah, for the firm professionally, I specialize in government and nonprofit audits, so.
Thank you.
And as we go through the report, or we look at the report, and we have a question, we can get those answered through Bill and Kathy.
Yeah.
They'll get with you if we.
Yeah, yeah, they certainly know how to reach Ashley. So just let us know.
Thank you, Amanda.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
With no further discussion, motion.
Well, I.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Given what we heard with the, the audit. Given what we heard with the audit, I think a lot of, what's the right word? Kudos?
Kudos.
Kudos?
You betcha.
Should go to our financial director. So thank you.
Motion to accept the audit.
With a motion and a second on the floor, to ask for a question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we'll start council concerns. Thank you, ladies.
Thanks, Amanda. Thank you.
Council concerns, we'll start with Ballard and work along the bottom.
Okay, I've got a couple of them. We had a mask ordinance that we sent to our attorney. Have we heard anything back, comments, or what's the status?
Yeah, the approved copy was sent back to you guys about three weeks ago.
Oh, it was?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So you should have that in your email.
I'll have to look at my email then, okay? And the other one is, a while ago, we were given an update on the Smart Grid, which wasn't, didn't sound very smart. And I know we've still been working on it. I wonder if we have an update. Is it getting better? What's going on with it?
When we did the shut offs, we did use it even and got it updated the day before we used it, and we was very careful who we used, and we had about a, I don't know, Kathy turned some off, I turned some off, the fire plant turned some off. We had like four people turn them off since we had so many. And out of my stack in the power plant, we had like five out of 40 that we couldn't turn off, had to run trucks. I'd say we had about a 25% that we rode trucks on. The rest worked. We've been working with ENCODE, and they say that they'll have the code written to update the tanless side by the middle of next month. And we've been changing some meters and trying to make it work. So it's moving, it's not fast.
One of the issues we had was with the old, the old utility billing software. We had it here, and we had the tanless system here. Well, they couldn't talk to each other. Okay, there was, they just couldn't do, so we had to have a translator box in the middle. Tanless information going in, springbook information coming out. So one of the issues we're dealing with now is just having, what he talks about it when tanless is writing some code, it's for, no, ENCODE's writing the code. For ENCODE, the utility billing side, just so they could talk direct without having the middleman. Okay?
Okay.
That's, that's kind of one of the things that they're working on right now, is doing away with the middleman. I think there's been, I don't know, in the last month, there's been more progress than the past several months. I think the guy's name is David Miller? David?
Yes, Miller.
Miller. Has done, has done a pretty good job on bulldogging it and getting it going, and, you know, I've made several phone calls to try and keep things going and get things going, and I would, I would love for you to ask that same question in, in four weeks.
Okay.
Just love to have you ask that question. And hopefully, we'll be able to give a, a much better, much more detailed, much, I don't, I don't want to say that we're not giving a positive answer now, but it's, I think in, in four weeks, it's going to be much more positive.
There will be really.
It's that we're going to be back, back to where we're reading the meters and doing the shut offs and turn ons, and, and we're, and we're back to the outage management, and we're doing some of the GIS stuff. I think in four weeks, it's, if we make as much progress the next four weeks as we made in the last four weeks, we're going to be pretty good shape by Halloween.
There's some of the vendors actually calling us back now and saying, are we still on schedule? Are we okay? They've, one called Bill, was it yesterday or the day before, to, okay, we've got this one PO in, if we can get this in, we're still on target for October 15th. So I think we've got the other players' attention.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Hopefully optimistic.
So we'll hear back in four weeks.
So the Smart Grid was before I came on to the council. Was it sold as a package by a company, and the company disappeared, or how did it get so far split?
No. There was a grant to try to push out automated meter reading from the federal government, and we applied for it. We was one of the only ones in this state that got it.
We were the only one in this state.
And what it was, was try to get this new systems out there, get them started, and probably some of the equipment that was sold at that time was in its alpha stage, not its beta. And that was part of the push out to get it out into the market, was to jumpstart the market. Tanless is the people we originally started with. We did have another software firm, and I don't remember its name. They was kind of the metal guys, Kathy. USSI. We have since dropped them because we didn't really see where they was bringing that much more to the party. And then we, we used the part of the old system, which was the hand meter, that's the translator Bill's talking about. We used an existing billing system, and then we tied it to a new mapping system, which is Kyle's. And we tied it to an outage program. So it was a mixture of some old, some new. And I think Bill puts it pretty good most of the time. I'll agree with him. We probably tried to do too much with it off the get-go and had it trying to go too many directions. The outage part has pretty much always worked. If lights go out at your house, it timestamp when it went out, it timestamp when they're back on. If you got to call somebody out to get the lights on, the guy at the power plant can usually say, I got five houses showing out, or I've got 550 houses showing out. So that part's worked. The, the part that has not worked consistently is billing. We've had our times when billing worked for several months. Yeah.
And originally, we had just a lot of different players, a lot of different pieces of equipment. And I am not the person to talk to about technology, other than I, I'm not, I'm not a huge fan when it doesn't work, because I don't understand how to fix it. But we had lots of players, lots of equipment, and everybody had their own little idiosyncrasies, and it's just been a, it's been a multi-year struggle getting everything to communicate and work rate.
And part of it was, we was behind to start with. Our cybersecurity back at that time was, I won't say nonexistent, but it was one level above what you could buy off the shelf at Walmart and plug in. So we had to get that up too, which led to other problems. Once you got the security up, other stuff didn't want to talk through the security barriers and.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about firewall.
Yeah, you forgot about firewall problems, didn't you?
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Daryl, before you go, did we have an opportunity to check out, just make sure meters, do you have random checks to make sure meters are putting out exactly what is being read? Is there any?
Yes, anytime that a customer requests a meter read, we will go do it. We've also got a dual meter base. Like if, if you thought your meter was wrong at your house for whatever reason, we've got a dual meter base. We'll put two meters side by side that's measuring both, and we'll do a comparison. And we'll do that on the side of your house where you can, you can witness it, and we'll leave it in there for up to a month.
But going, going back to that question, I think, I'm not quite sure who was involved in the process of finding it, but there was a lady here in town, literally in tears that her utility bill was, her electric bill was so high. And she just, just moved into this new house, well, moved into an old house, but she, her electric bill was just huge. And, you know, the guys kind of went over and said, oh, your meter's spinning, you're, you're using it. Well, I can't be. And then they got on the, they, they can see how much you use per hour and some of this stuff. And the, the usage was always here, just high. Well, so because we have staff that cares, they went in and kind of looked over the lady's house, and they found a switch on the basement wall, and they said, what's the switch? She goes, I don't know. It was her heated driveway.
Wow.
Whee.
Flipped that switch off, and her utility bill literally dropped hundreds of dollars a month. Because she was heating her driveway in July and August, September.
Oh, my.
Maybe would have recognized that, but didn't have to shovel snow.
Well, and, you know, she had, but she had a, she just moved in. She didn't know about the system, and somehow it got turned on, and nobody knew or realized. But normally, normally, if it's like water, if you've seen, we'll get a call from the city or somebody saying, hey, we see that our meters, your meters, you lose water, you got a leak somewhere and things like that. I guess that, yeah.
Certain amount of water.
Yeah, a lot of times, especially folks with heat pumps, that reversing valve will get hung between the summer heating system and winter, and Kathy will usually catch down that first bill in the summer that, hey, it's.
Yeah.
Good, excellent.
Anything else, Mr. Simmons?
No, sir. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Stone?
Three things, Mr. Braun. One, Mr. Johnson, can you just go ahead and put an update on the Smart Grid on the, on our second October council meeting, so Mr. Simmons doesn't have to remember to ask a question?
Sure does.
Thank you.
You saying something?
No. That way, that way, he's ready for it.
Yes.
Second, with the recycling, I received phone calls, you know, since the, since the newspaper article hit about what it was on our agenda tonight, and the citizens are very, the citizens I spoke with are very concerned about any type of reduction or stopping of the curbside pickups for both yard waste and recycling. So we just need to be aware, or we need to pulse our own, all of our constituents and find out exactly what the citizens are wanting to do and not just make a, a dollar sign decision. And then the third, it was brought to my attention that we've got a homeless encampment that is going on, on a private residence here in the city, and I was asked to, to ask about that. And I'm not asking for any details right now, but just letting Mr. Johnson just know that I'm going to be asking some specific questions about it.
You can probably talk to me after the meeting. Talk to me and Steve and maybe Dennis.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay. Mr. Shiverdecker?
I'm good. I have nothing.
Mr. Washington?
I was contacted by someone on Parkview, that located over there by Westminster College, and something about the roads are in pretty bad shape, just somebody to check it out. And they said they added a new road, but they thought maybe a yield sign, but I checked it out, and, and I'm not sure if it warrants one, but anyway, they addressed that the roads were pretty bad, breaking up, cracking up in the areas. So just something to check out.
Mr. Kluth?
Nothing this evening.
I have nothing.
Okay. And the only thing I will say is I heard quite a bit about recycling as well from Jeff. As Jeff did, and I certainly think that we definitely need a work session to, to talk about that, so. Other than that, that's it. We'll move on to resolutions. Councilwoman Recluth, would you please present Resolution 3382?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to make application and sign all necessary documents to apply for a local law enforcement block grant from the Missouri Department of Public, of Public Safety. I'd like to make a motion to adopt, make a motion to adopt Resolution 3382 at this current meeting. Thank you.
Hi, Hillary. I have a motion and a second on the floor. Discussion. Anybody concerned? This is what we amended the agenda for, is this resolution for anybody that might have joined us since the beginning and might not have seen it on our resolutions, so.
I received a phone call this afternoon from Police Chief Myers, and there is a grant, one that we apply for nearly every single year, and the deadline is this Friday. So that's why it needed to be added to this meeting. And unfortunately, it sounds like it just kind of fell off the radar at that point. So the money is a set amount that they can apply for, and I believe they anticipate using this for some upgrades for their surveillance system.
If I hear no, no further discussion, I'll ask the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Moving on to ordinances. Councilwoman Seibacher, would you please present 1593?
Yes, sir. Bill number 1593, an ordinance of the City of Fulton, Missouri, adopting floodplain management regulations designed to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. I make a motion to adopt Resolution number 1593 at this council meeting.
Seibacher?
Just really quickly, would that be second reading at this council meeting, or if that's okay?
Second reading.
Or at the next?
Yes.
At the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any discussion?
Dennis, do you want to give your, your quick spiel about why we're doing this?
I had a phone visit with Karen McHugh. She's the State National Flood Insurance Program Coordinator, and our, this document hasn't been updated since 2005, so she felt recommended that we update this document to continue in the National Flood Insurance Program. So it's basically the same thing. She took care of doing everything, and she sent the copy to me and the mayor and Bill.
Because right now, if you're in a floodplain, you're not eligible to buy floodplain insurance unless you have, we have this ordinance in place.
Do we, do we have a map of the city's floodplain?
Yes, we, it was amended in 2012. That's when we adopted the new map, the 2012 version, and that's what we're currently under, the floodplain map.
Is that on the website?
I don't think it is. I have maps.
We could probably get one and get it sent out to you guys. We could probably get that added to the website.
I know we have it on our GAIS that we have in engineering, and then I have the paper maps in my office.
How would a citizen get that information right now?
They would have to call.
Call your own.
Contact us here.
Thank you.
Now, I believe they can go to the state's website and enter an address and pull it up through the state's website.
It might be an interesting piece for the newsletter next month. Mr. Johnson?
We, we have very, I mean, in, I have not seen or dealt with it since I've been on since 2018. It only happens if there's new construction or substantial improvements in a floodplain area that you, we would utilize, utilize the maps. But it does, I mean, a property owner that purchases a house that's in a floodplain, they will use it. Usually, the realtor will supply that information.
I just, I, the piece that interests me is I know, I've, I know people that have property where their property is considered in a floodplain because they're too close to one of the creeks that runs through town, or one of the ditches, really, that runs through town. And, and it becomes very confusing for that homeowner to understand exactly what floodplain they're in and why they're in the floodplain, and why they have to buy certain insurance or can't buy other insurances, so.
We've dealt with a couple, our houses over off of Rimveen Street, that one is in the floodplain and the one next door is not.
And the one in the floodplain actually has the better protection from the creek or the ditch than the other one does.
That would be correct.
That was the exact example I was thinking of.
All right.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Dennis.
Thanks.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And you did say just first reading tonight?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Simmons, would you present Bill 1594, please?
Yes, sir. Bill number 1594, an ordinance amending Section 110-248 Speed Limits, Paragraph 2, Fulton City Code, by removing a street designated as a school zone and establishing an effective date. I make a motion that we advance Bill number 1594 to second reading at the next scheduled council meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? This is the small section there where.
Kingdom Christian Academy was.
Kingdom Christian Academy used to be or is.
Just a...
And it's removed.
And this is taking away the school's own twenty mile an hour speed limit and bringing it back up to thirty miles an hour.
Yes.
That is correct.
And this did go to the Traffic Commission. And Mary's now our liaison for that commission. And they did recommend this change. We're also going to have a couple changes probably coming forward in the next few meetings of some other things that they recommended. So, we have a few things in the works.
Recognizing that it's not appropriate to remain a school zone, but that area has been twenty miles an hour for decades. And we have a park in that area. We have the scout cabin. We're going to have an active rec... I guess I'd be interested if the committee... Did they discuss keeping it twenty miles an hour even though it's not a school zone?
No.
Was there any of that discussion, Mary?
No. No, we didn't.
I mean, that's my personal interest, is maybe that that stretch of Eighth Street should still remain twenty miles an hour. But that's just... that's my own personal curiosity.
I know if you go from the Eighth Street-Wood Street intersection, it's thirty miles an hour on Eighth Street for about a hundred yards. And then it drops down to twenty.
Yep.
And stays at twenty all the way into town. And Wood Street going towards Z is sort of twenty, but it's really thirty, except during school times.
Yeah. And prior to Kingdom Christian Academy being there in that building, it was MSD.
Right.
It's kind of always been in that pocket of a school zone. And people have gotten used to that and feel protected with that speed limit, so...
So, we have a motion and a second. I'm hearing a little bit of discussion. Is this something that we want to move forward with? Or do we table to go and look at what Jeff's saying?
No, if the committee's asked for it, it's just my personal observation that I think is something that could be considered, especially as we're going to be adding to the activity. We might need to look at that speed limit again at a different date. Maybe once it goes back up to thirty and we realize there's no problems, there won't be.
But right now, the Wood Street, Eighth Street corridor, I guess you could say, is kind of confusing, speed limit wise. So, it sounds like we're trying to change things and make it a little more consistent.
I believe also, in that situation, if you do decide to go thirty... If I remember right, teaching driver's ed and going down those streets several times, there are a lot of yield signs, like on the... I think on... I'm trying to think.
Line.
State Street. On State, there's a yield sign. And if you go thirty, I think you might have to change that yield sign to a stop sign.
Well, the thing is, as soon as you pass State Street, it's back down to twenty.
Yeah. I'm just saying...
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if you get that speed up, I think then you might have to change your signs. Instead of yield signs, you may have to go to stop signs. Same way by the cemetery, I think that's a yield sign too. And I can understand being yield sign at twenty miles an hour and visibility is very clear. You don't have anything to obstruct your vision. So, that's the reason why they probably had it. But if you increase the speed in that area, there's a possibility that you may have to change the traffic signs. I'm just... It's just...
Yeah.
I just wanted to add that that was one of the topics that will be coming your way is Wood Street, propose changes with that as we get those traffic beacons for the school that we got the grant for. So, we are proposing changes to Wood Street along there too to make it more consistent, more, you know, identifiable what's what over there. So, I just wanted to mention that. And also that we had felt that we could always go change it back to twenty, but we thought the main corridor through there would probably be from the middle school up to that new community center. And we felt that thirty miles an hour is probably what people are actually driving up through there.
Yeah.
And, you know, we could place our radar speed sign up there and actually measure what speeds are and use that to kind of, you know, could have some knowledge for you, maybe by next meeting on what folks are traveling, so...
I don't think there's anything needed by next meeting. I mean, because we... it's very appropriate to not be school zone. It's just... it's just an interesting area there with lots of pedestrian activity.
Yeah, that's the issue.
Thank you. Mr. Braun?
Okay, if there's no further discussion, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. So, we'll move on to the second reading for Mr. Washington, fifteen ninety-one, please.
Bill number fifteen ninety-one, an ordinance reclassifying, under the zoning ordinance, a tract of land known as four-ten South Business Fifty-four in Fulton, Missouri, and establish an effective date. I move that we move this reading to the third and final reading of the next October session, council session.
Second.
Okay, we talked about this and discussed it last week. Had a open... or last meeting, we had comments from visitors. If there's nothing further, no more discussion, I'll ask the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So, to move on to third reading at the next regularly scheduled meeting. Mr. Scherbedeker, fifteen ninety-two, please.
Yes, sir. An ordinance authorizing the amendment to the City of Fulton budget for the fiscal year 2019 as outlined by Article eight, Financial Procedures, Section eight-point-eight amendments. After adoption, paragraph C, Transfer of Appropriations, Fulton City Charter, and establish an effective date. Make a motion to advance Bill fifteen ninety-two for final consideration at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Okay, I've heard of Bill fifteen ninety-two. We have a motion and a second on the floor to go to final passage at tonight's meeting. Any reason for discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We've heard fifteen ninety-two read three times. We will go to final passage at tonight's meeting.
All right. Ms. Recluth?
Yes.
Ms. Seabacher?
Yes.
Mr. Scherbedeker?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
And Mr. Braun?
Yes.
Seven council members affirmative and one absent.
Bill number fifteen ninety-two has passed. Okay, we have announcements. Madam Clerk, would you please present the announcements?
Certainly. Our next meeting of the City Council will be Tuesday, October thirteenth. We will have a work session at six-thirty PM and regular session at seven o'clock. And then fall bulk trash pickup will be held the week of October nineteenth through the twenty-third. Saturday, October twenty-fourth will be the final household hazardous waste day of the year. Goodness. And those are the only announcements I'm aware of.
Okay. The Chief Myers handed out a flyer tonight. You want to talk about it, Steve? Or you want me to just go through the flyer?
I think this is one they want.
Yes, sir.
Just for people that are watching, come and meet and eat with your local officers, with your local police officers. It's going to be conducted Saturday, October third, at Carver Park, starting at twelve noon to three-thirty. The entire community is invited to come up and have lunch and meet your officers and see them interact. If you have any information, you can call the police station.
I mean, call...
You can call Caesar Brand.
People work together.
Yeah.
So, the council in Washington and Reverend Jackson and there was the...
Vertis. Vertis. Board member Vertis.
Vertis. So...
School board member.
So, we all met and decided to do this. And they come up now and... So, we're looking forward to it.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief. We do not have a need for an executive session this evening.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?